Josephine Ventura.
Good evening. My name is Josephina Ventura from Riverside Haco Neighborhood Association in Washington Heights, and there are a couple of reasons why I came to testify and to ask for a zero increase. One of them is that the landlord has huge increases to MCI's approved by the HCR. Another way they can increase the values of the apartment, the rent of the apartment, is through individual apartment increases, having vacancy bonus increases every time a tenant moves out of an apartment, deregulating rent stabilized apartments, raising the rents to market rates. Another increase is a boarding in New York City's household, creating grounds for evictions. We can't pay our rent. Landlord will take us to court when that happens. Once they get holdovers against tenants, it implies homelessness in our neighborhoods. Landlords also get benefits when they replace appliances and charge fees that stay permanently in our monthly rents. We don't need more increases to end up on the streets with our families. Landlords are making huge profits. Let's demand them to open up their books. The most affected are our senior citizens with fixed incomes and low-income families, even getting hours reduced in their jobs, which translate to a salary reduction. They are the ones getting the worst of all this because they have to stretch their income and decide whether to put food on their tables, co-pay medical fees and medications. Please approve zero increases this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Evelyn Rivera. Is Evelyn Rivera here? All right. The next three speakers are Adelki Kapenin, Dave Subren, and Hector Jose Gomez.
Hi there, everyone. My name is Adelki. How are you guys doing today?
Fine, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. So, my name is Adelki Capellang, and I lived at 119 Awood Street for a year, almost a year and a half. My management company was Terrystone Elwood Holdings LP. There was three roommates, and all of us were paying $900 each. This is an inward, so before moving in that specific unit, the tenants before assigned a preferential lease. This past May, I moved. My rent had increased to $80. That might not be too bad, but when you see that as a share of the increased rent, that's 80 times 3. I've only lived there for a year and a half, and I couldn't afford to live in the neighborhood that I grew up in. Even if I had roommates, I had to move back with my mother. Luckily, I have the privilege of being with my mother, but not many other folks around the city have that privilege. Sorry. After moving in with my mother, I noticed that the next building over from my mother has now been approved for two MCI's. Every day, I see more permits on their door, and I fear that my building within the next year is going to be in the same predicament. Tenants are being harassed and brought out of their rent stabilized units through this preferential lease. That's just one of the tactics that's being used by the landlords. Each of you are held responsible for all the rent stabilized tenants in all boroughs. These increases are too much. 2% is a lot for New York City tenants. This is why I'm asking you to vote for a 0% increase. None of us can afford to be living in those predicaments anymore. There's a lot of conditions that we have withheld, and we keep it, and sometimes we don't even say it because we're afraid of that risking our tenancy. So, I think it's really important. I'm here for folks that aren't here and that wouldn't be able to make it because they're actually working to keep the rent stable. Thank you.
Thank you. Dave Subren.
Hi. My name is Dave Subren, a member of CASA, and I'm retired now from -- I was trained by HPD in building maintenance, seven-day administration, weatherization, and electrical troubleshooting. So, my testimony is just to expose the hidden profits that real estate people make. Every year, we get a rent increase, yet real wages are not growing in kind, which the Rent Guidelines Board's own report corroborates. So, if we were to get another rent increase without a similar wage increase, tenants would be even more rent burdened, which would lead to more evictions, homelessness, which is already at a record high of 60,000 and counting, not to mention those in the streets and doubled up with families and friends for the last nine consecutive years. By the way, I used to be one. Keep in mind, we are not only trying to hog rent increases now, but to correct the huge increases suffered during the Bloomberg and Giuliani administration, where the mayor's appointed landlord-friendly RGB members who passed huge unjustified rent increases, sometimes double, triple the inflation rate. Also, the landlords of rent stabilized apartments have a safety net called a profit hardship exemption, which means that as a landlord, if your building brings in less than 5% profit in a year, you can apply for this special exemption to have your rent increase beyond what would be legal. Ironically, few landlords take advantage of this. Example, last year, only three landlords applied and were disqualified, which was why few landlords take advantage of this exemption, because it would mean they would have to open their books and show and prove to the city that they are actually struggling due to low profits, and this is why, for the past several years, there has never been a successful attempt to qualify. So landlords resort to other, more profitable methods with less scrutiny, such as MCI's, where in 2017 landlords were granted $185 million, IAIs, preferential leases, vacancy bonuses, as well as nuisance fees on their rent bill, like air conditioner, washing machine, and refrigerator surcharges to be paid in perpetuity. And this is excluding the many tax and legal benefits and/or loopholes on their real property like depreciation, tax exemption, credits in return for providing so-called affordable housing like 421A with its multiple embedded discounts like low-income tax credit known as LITTA.
Excuse me. Could you wind up your testimony, please?
I am. I am.
Thank you.
And J51 programs. Today landlords make about 40 cents on the dollar. Meanwhile, one out of four rent stabilized tenants live below the poverty line. The poverty rate in New York City is over 15%, and the past two years, personal bankruptcy filing has risen over 10%. Landlords not only make money every year, but importantly, their profits increase. Last paragraph.
Thank you.
Rental income for landlords has increased by 3.1%, while operating costs increased only 2.4% for the net operating income, which is how much money or property landlord takes in after expenses not only grew, but was compounded 4.4% per year for the last 12 consecutive years. So, in closing, I implore you to consider the aforementioned factual statistics based on empirical evidence and the anecdotal testimonies that you have heard here this evening from we, the tenants, and vote yes for a rent increase. Thank you.
Thank you. Hector Jose Gomez. Hector Jose Gomez, are you here? He left? Okay, thank you. The next three speakers are Naomi Corporam, Raphael Schweitzer, and Sergio Cuevas. Is Naomi Corporam here? Raphael Schweitzer? Sergio Cuevas? All right.
Can you dig it? My name is Sergio Cuevas. I am a member of the Northwest Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition. I reside at 2785 Sedwick Avenue, a rent stabilized apartment, so-called rent stabilized apartment. My landlord is Finkelstein Timberger, a person, a real estate company, that motive of operation is obtaining a building initially and right away imposing MCI's. That's his motive of operation. He owns over 86 buildings, okay? And all we're doing is just feeding the pig. You know, I do this as a volunteer, okay? I work. I work hard, and I volunteer with the Northwest Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition Housing Committee. And we don't have everybody here. We don't have the people who are working hard, who are afraid to come out because of their status, okay? We have elderly people that are getting abused, but we don't care. We don't care. You folks don't care. You raise the rates, okay? We get MCI's, left and right, and it's, you know, so evil that they become a permanent fixture of the rent. That's what makes it so hard. That's what makes it so nasty. And all we're saying is, hey, no rent increases. They're getting their rents, okay? And they're getting their MCI's when they put them through. Sometimes we get lousy service, believe me. So, all I'm saying is, think about this, okay? For the future, you're going to be in a situation such as we are right now, and then we're going to see you cry the blues, okay? Remember that. Thank you very much for letting me talk. Can you dig it? No rent increases. Thank you.
Okay. We have about 20 more speakers. I need to take about a three-minute break, and we'll be back. The next speakers are Angelo Vega, Lena Melendez, and Nelson Lozado. Angelo Vega? Is it Angelo? Lena Melendez?
That's me.
Okay, great. Go ahead.
Hi. My name is Lena Melendez, and I'm a resident of 565 West 162nd Street in Washington Heights. Oh, my God. Hold on. Hold on. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We need a rent rollback, but we'll settle for a rent freeze under no conditions do we need a rent increase. The RGB increase is not the only way the rent goes up. MCI's, preferential rent leases, late fees, individual apartment increases, and the 20% vacancy bonus. So, the RGB is not the only way landlords get an increase. If every time a tenant moves out, if every time a tenant moves out, they request an IAI, and they don't have to give receipts to the HCR, okay? So, there's no way of knowing if they really did those improvements in the apartments, and yet they sometimes get to deregulate the apartments if it goes past $2,700. They get subsidies for Section 8 housing tenants. We need a rollback, not a rent increase. The price of food goes up, the price of transportation goes up, the price of everything goes up, but wages don't go up, and we need a rent rollback. Landlords are allowing their buildings to go into disrepair. The real estate market in New York is bubbling over. Rezonings are devastating low-income neighborhoods, and what we have is economic apartheid. What we have is an ethnic cleansing. That's what we have, okay? It's a racial segregatory agenda that the Mayor de Blasio has in this city. He's in the pockets of Rebny, okay? He's nothing but a Rebny puppet. And if any of you are with him, then you are doing Rebny's bidding. Make no mistake. Downing -- those rezonings are downing rent stabilized buildings, incentivizing landlords to harass tenants to get out so they can destabilize the apartments and get market-rate rents. Low-income tenants are getting priced out because low income is anywhere below $65,000. I ain't never made $65,000 in my life, and I'm 54 years old. Rebny, that's at the root cause of our rent problems, and with their money, they influence our politicians, our lawmakers, our policies, and you too. What did you think -- what do you think about de Blasio's being caught in a restaurant basement, right, and get $100,000, right, from real estate moguls? He's selling us out. He's selling New York City out. He ran his campaign on bridging the divide between the tale of two cities. He's lining his pockets, is what he's doing. Don't be a de Blasio puppet. He's supposed to work for us, and you are supposed to work for us. So, do your job.
Thank you. Nelson Lozado? Nelson Lozado? All right. The next three speakers are Martha Melendez, Alexis Francisco, and Allison Manuel. She left? Okay, thank you for letting me know. Alexis Francisco?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Alexis Francisco. I am a member of Northwest Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition and New Day Church, and I'm a tenant at 3150 Rochambeau Avenue in the Bronx. My building is just a couple of blocks up from the stretch of Webster Avenue that was rezoned a couple of years ago, and that rezoning was pitched as something that was going to stimulate the economy of the Bronx and bring jobs to my community and affordable housing. Now, I go out and I'll stand on the corner of 204th Street and Webster, and I can count six new residential buildings under construction in a two-block stretch, at least 12 stories high each. Neighborhood businesses have been getting their rents raised and closing their doors, and now the landlords are starting to jack up rents and harass tenants because they see an opportunity to line their pockets on our backs. In my building, we just got hit with a huge MCI supposedly for elevator repairs, and what happens this week? Me and my roommate got stuck in the elevator two nights ago. We got stuck in it again yesterday afternoon, and then a friend of mine and her partner were coming to the house, and they got stuck in it last night. Tell me how that justifies our rent going up by almost $800 a year permanently. On top of that, my roommate and I have to worry about speaking out against the shady landlord because we have preferential rent, and if he retaliates, he could take that away, and our rent goes up by $1,000 in one shot. People in my building are afraid to speak up because they know landlords can retaliate, taking away these preferential rents or dragging people to court on false charges. The system is already set up to benefit the landlords at every turn, and this board, every one of you sitting up there at that table, you are the place where the interests of working people, where the needs of the tenants are supposed to get taken into consideration. Don't sell yourselves for the interests of wealthy landlords. You have an opportunity to act on what is right. Now, a huge stretch of Jerome Avenue is getting rezoned from Yankee Stadium to Burnside Avenue, supposedly to bring affordable housing that nobody in our communities can actually afford. We all know what this is going to bring and who it's going to benefit. The Bronx is the last borough where you can find rent that's anywhere near affordable, and now we're in the crosshairs for gentrification too. So, all these people that you saw here tonight, we're not here because we want to be. We would much rather be at home relaxing with our families or curled up with Babe. But we're here because you need to see the faces of the people whose lives you hold in your hands. Do the right thing. Vote a rent freeze. We demand a rent freeze.
Thank you. Allison Manuel?
My name is Allison Manuel, and I'm also a member of the Northwest Bronx Community and Clergy Coalition and of New Day Church, and I've been a Bronx resident for almost a decade. And in the building where I live, in 3150 Rochambeau Avenue, the landlord is pushing for an MCI, that the landlord is justifying with duplicated checks, work that has been done after the MCI was applied for, and repairs they have never completed. This past week alone, my roommate and I got stuck in the elevator twice, and I am an able-bodied person who holds privileges that the majority of the people in my building don't. Many are elders, young people, folks with disabilities, most of them low-income people of color with entire families to feed. And I know that you, as a board, could not justify voting for a rent increase that would reward owners like this one if the majority of you lived with the kinds of landlord abuse that everyone here has been testifying tonight. Already, we are experiencing retaliation for exercising our right to organize, as the landlord has begun taking tenant leaders to court for fraudulent claims to harass them to stop. I know that you, as a board, could not justify voting for a rent increase that would reward these owners if the majority of you had to live with the consequences of your decision. So, if you vote for a rent increase this year, you are not only voting to make life for the people in this borough unlivable, you are signaling to all landlords that they can continue with this kind of harassment with no consequences. The choice y'all have in front of you is not really one about what is a justifiable increase for owners to do business. The choice y'all have in front of you is a moral choice about right and wrong, about the future of our borough, the future of our city, and when history is written, whose side are you going to be on? Because the choice for all of us is clear. No matter where we go, we will continue to fight back against the apathy of boards that are stacked with people who have the privilege of not having to sacrifice because of the decisions they make. Our nation is in a moment of urgency, where white supremacy and attacks on the poor are on the rise, and we all have choices to make that will either turn the tide or not. Tonight is your choice. Tonight is your choice.
Thank you.
For justice and decency to be served, moments like this require that people like you decide to disobey mandates that the interests you serve call necessary, but that you know are violent, that you know are wrong. So, the folks here tonight are offering you an opportunity for you to not have to be personally, yes, personally responsible for thousands of people to lose their homes, for this city to lose its heart and soul, and for y'all to sacrifice your own humanity to help carry that out. So, vote for the lives of the people in the Bronx, and if not that, vote for your own humanity. Vote for a rent rollback.
Thank you. The next speakers are Josephina Salazar, Yolanda Lozado, and Alba Quinones.
Hi, Josephina. I'm going to translate for Josephina, but she's going to read her whole speech, and then I'll read the whole translated speech after her.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Josephina Salazar, y soy miembro de Movimiento por Justicia del Barrio. Nosotros venimos del este de Harlem. Estamos aquí porque estamos en contra del aumento de renta. Nosotros somos personas de bajos recursos que trabajamos, pero eso no es suficiente. Tenemos muchos gastos, y para que ustedes quieran subir la renta no es justo. Ustedes quieren subir la renta cada año. No, nosotros no estamos conscientes de eso. Disculpen que les diga a todos los que están allí en la mesa, pero ustedes no saben qué es vivir en carencias. Ustedes no saben qué es ser gente de bajos ingresos como nosotros, el pueblo. Porque ustedes tal vez tienen sus casas grandes, sus apartamentos grandes, y amueblados. Y no saben qué es estar pensando o estar preocupados por la renta cada mes. Y ustedes les vale si nosotros tenemos para la renta, o estamos enfermos, o no tenemos trabajo. Nosotros tenemos que pagar nuestra renta. Y ustedes todavía quieren subirla cada año. No estamos de acuerdo. Ya ustedes están considerando el aumento. Queremos y exigimos una congelación de renta. Porque a nosotros de bajos recursos, la gente pobre, nos perjudica mucho. A todos nosotros, todos nosotros, el pueblo, somos pobres. No tenemos trabajo donde nos dé suficiente dinero como para pagar cada año altas rentas. El alcalde y ustedes de la mesa directiva solo piensan en el aumento. No se ponen a pensar en nosotros, que ganamos pocos, que tenemos esa posibilidad de tener -- no tenemos buenos recursos. Por eso es que estamos todos aquí, pidiendo y exigiendo, como acaba de decir un compañero. Nosotros es para que estuviéramos en nuestras casas, con nuestras familias, con nuestros hijos que mañana prepararlos para la escuela. Por ejemplo, yo en este momento es para que estuviera preparando mis cosas. Yo trabajo en la calle vendiendo, pero yo estoy aquí porque a mí me interesa que pongan un alto a la renta, porque yo no tengo para pagar una renta.
Excuse me. We're way past two minutes here. Could you please wind up? Could you ask her to please finish up?
Yo estoy segura que ni uno de ustedes de la mesa directiva, ni uno de ustedes vive como yo vivo. Yo estoy segura que ni uno de ustedes. Tengo cuatro hijos, y dos son mayores, que no se han podido ir de mi lado porque no tienen para pagar un apartamento. Mi apartamento es muy chico. No tengo la posibilidad o darme el lujo de agarrar otro más grande para cada quien tener su privacidad. ¿Por qué? Porque están bien alta la renta. Soy una madre soltera, y yo no tengo, no me alcanza para eso.
We need to let everyone get a chance to speak here. We have 20 more people who need to speak. It's only fair that people abide by the two-minute rule. Everybody on this board has agreed to the two-minute rule.
Good evening. My name is Josephina Salazar, and I'm a member of Movement for Justice in El Barrio. We came from there from Harlem. We are here today because we are against rent increases. We are low-income people who work, but that is not enough. We have many expenses, and it is unjust for you to want to raise the rent on us every year. Excuse me for saying this, but you do not know what it is to like -- you do not know what it is like to live in poverty. You do not know about being low-income because you might have your big houses or big and furnished apartments, and you do not know what it is to think or be worried about the rent every month. You do not care if we do not have enough for the rent, if we are sick, if we are out of work. You still want to increase it every year, and we are not okay with it. You already increased the rent considerably. We want and demand a rent freeze because this hurts us, low-income people, because we do not have the money to pay such high fees for rent. The mayor and you all on the Rent Guidelines Board only think about increasing rent and never consider the lives of people like us. You make -- we make very little. We do not all come from money, and that is why we are here, asking, demanding that you be reasonable, that you freeze our rent. I am certain that not a single one of you live like me. I am a single mother. I have four children, and the two older ones still live with me because they don't have enough for their own place because they're studying. My apartment is very small, and I cannot afford to move to a bigger place, and you guys are still increasing the rent. Thank you and good night.
Thank you. Yolanda Lozado? Is Yolanda Lozado here?
El Barrio will not be sold. It will be loved, and it will be defended.
Alba Quinones? Yolanda Lozado, Alba Quinones, Benita Ramos, April Hurley, and Shannon Jones will be the next three speakers. and Shannon Jones will be the next three speakers. Is Benita Ramos here? All right, you're the next speaker, Ms. Ramos.
Buenas noches a todos.
Good evening.
Mi nombre es Benita Ramos. Yo vivo en el 16 Elliott Place. Estoy acá porque yo les quiero pedir un congelamiento de renta.
Good evening. My name is Benita Ramos, and I live at 16 Elliott Place, and I'm here to ask you for a rent freeze.
Les pido que... el congelamiento de renta porque yo no puedo pagar mi renta. El año pasado, el mes de agosto, el dueño me mandó a corte. Y estuve casi ahí un año. Apenas hoy, terminé de pagar todo lo que yo le debía. Yo tengo esposo y tres hijos. Él trabaja, pero no nos alcanza. Son muchos gastos. Mi hijo, el mayor, tiene asma.
Excuse me just a moment. We need to stop and get an interpretation, please.
I'm asking for a rent freeze because I can't pay the... I can't afford to pay rent if we have an increase. Last year, I... or my previous apartment, I was taken to court by my landlord, and I was in court in procedures for a year. I just finished paying what I owed him yesterday, or today. I have a husband and three kids, but we don't have enough for all of us. One of my children has asthma.
Yo trabajo para ayudarle a mi esposo con los gastos, pero a veces yo me voy a trabajar y como en media hora me llaman de la escuela que tengo que recoger el niño porque está enfermo, tiene asma, no puede respirar. Yo tengo que salir del trabajo y no me pagan toda la semana. No trabajo muchas horas por atender a mi hijo, que lo tengo que llevar al hospital.
Excuse me, let's get the interpretation, please.
I work to support my husband with expenses, but I don't earn enough. I go to work, and thirty minutes later, I'll get a call from the school to go pick up my son because he's sick. So I don't work enough hours to make ends meet. I constantly have to take care of my son because he's struggling with his illness.
Por eso estoy acá pidiéndole a ustedes un congelamiento de renta. Porque el otro mes, yo voy a pagar más. Y yo no sé qué voy a hacer si apenas hoy terminé de pagarle lo que le debía a mi casero. Por favor, tengan consciente que nosotros trabajamos, pero no ganamos suficiente para pagar todos nuestros gastos. A veces, mis hijos dicen, "Mami, yo quiero un... Necesito tenis." Y yo les tengo que decir, "Hasta que paguemos la renta. Si nos alcanza, les compro, y si no, al otro mes."
So I'm here to ask you for a rent freeze because next month I'm gonna pay more, I'm gonna have to pay more rent. And I don't know what I'm gonna do if I just finished paying what my landlord owed them today. I ask you to please consider all of this because all of us work, but we don't earn enough. Sometimes my kids say, "I need, Mom, I need new shoes." And I tell him, or I tell them that we have to wait until we see if we have enough for rent, and if we don't, then they're gonna have to wait until next month.
Muchas gracias por escuchar. Buenas noches.
Thank you for listening. Good night. April Hurley?
Good evening. Thank you for your time and your consideration. I've rewritten what I'm gonna say like a million times, but... Tonight, you've heard many well-spoken testimonies about folks urging you for a rent freeze. But you all know what we really want is a rent rollback. Earlier, my elders highlighted statistics like that there are 63,000 folks who are homeless. But tonight, I wanted to speak about those who are homeless, but they aren't counted, those who are doubled up, those who are homeless and they hop from one apartment to another apartment. Growing up, I experienced that. My mom owned a home, and it was a private landlord, and he just kept raising the rents. And then, one day, we got evicted. And after we were evicted, we were blessed to live with a family. And then, from one family, we moved to another family until my mom was able to get an apartment. The apartment was small, and it was crowded, but that was all that she could afford. As the elders spoke before, you already know many of the statistics mentioned. You already know many of the characteristics, what it's like to live in a Bronx. You may have experienced it yourself. You may have experienced living with roaches and mice, or maybe you haven't. Maybe it's common for you to hear that there's no heat and no hot water. Maybe you think that is a norm. Maybe you feel like we are accustomed to this and we like this. But what I choose to believe is that you're doing a temperature check, that you want to see how oppressed are the people, and are we ready to cry out? Are we ready to push back and say no more? And here I am to raise the temperature to say, yes, we are sick and tired of being sick and tired. We are sick and tired of being cold. We are sick and tired of paying more than 30% of what we earned. We are sick and tired of just coming out of being... of being threatened and harassed by landlords. We are sick and tired, and now we are coming to you. We are appealing to you, and we're saying, yes, please, freeze the rent. But if you can, roll back the rent. It is too much. You understand. I'm pretty sure you've heard of gentrification and what it is. But one thing that I've learned recently is that it is a class warfare. So now, maybe folks like me, who earn less than $65,000, may be being pushed out. But one day, it will reach your doorstep. One day, the low class would have been pushed out. And if you consider yourself middle class, you will begin to experience what it is to be pushed out. So tonight, I am here... I am here to ask that you consider and you freeze the rent as you did in 2015 and 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. Shannon Jones, Deborah Awah, and Esti Agolia?
Hello, good evening. My name is Shannon Jones, and I ended up here because somebody asked me if I wanted to go out for a drink after work. And I ended up in the Rent Guidelines Board meeting. Check that out. No, oh no, y'all not gonna be laughing, trust and believe. Because this person is one of the smartest people I know, and he knew exactly what he was doing by asking me, an anti-police brutality activist and a militant revolutionary, to meet him at the Rent Guidelines Board meeting. So you guys will not be laughing over the next minute and 30 seconds. So my name is Shannon Jones, and I'm the co-founder of Bronx Sites for NYPD Accountability, affectionately known as Y-Acc accountability. And let me preface what I'm about to say is that as many people that stood up here and talked about the conditions that they're living with, the Rent Guidelines Board saw fit to enforce the rules of time. We will not be enforcing the rules of time when I'm on this mic, so y'all might as well turn the clock off, saying that in advance. All right, so... What does an anti-police brutality militant revolutionary activist that spent 15 years living in New York City public housing doing in a Rent Guidelines Board meeting? I don't pay rent according to rent guidelines. What has police brutality got to do with your rent and MCIs? What has all that got to do with each other, right? The hell is she doing up here? I'm gonna tell you what I'm doing up here. I'm doing that... What I'm doing up here is I'm facing you. I'm facing my family. I'm not facing them because you're not gonna appeal to any morality of your oppressors because they don't have any. That's why I'm facing this way. Why am I facing this way? For what? These people are gonna listen to your busted refrigerators, your roaches, your rats, your greedy landlord, your harassing landlord, and listen to all your sob stories with all of these sad faces, all of these stoic looks, these looks of concern. Oh, that's so sad. But check this out. They don't give a damn. When we recognize that as the real New York City, black and brown, that they don't give a damn. How many times... Because I saw El Barrio at the CB-11 rezoning meeting in Manhattan, so I know the work they do. How many times are we gonna read stories about our real-life experiences for rent to go up, for landlords to ignore you, for them to put cameras in your building, to send goons to harass you, to withhold your rent checks? This is the same thing that they do in New York City Housing Authority, slum you out. When we understand this, then we will understand that New York City has declared a war on you. War has been declared on you. So are you engaged in the war, or are you sleeping through the war? Because standing up here telling people about your roaches and rats is not part of the rules of engagement if you wanna win. Because these people don't give a damn about what you're going through. Period. And they use the militarized police state to enforce their will on you. It is all connected. Because if you don't pay your rent, and you end up in court and you're seeking an abatement, you got court officers... Is NYPD out there right now? Because they wanna make sure you don't really hold this board accountable, that you don't really hold landlords accountable. They wanna make sure that you don't do that. So the militarized police state is in here keeping you in check. Put the pieces of the puzzle together, family. Stop coming up to these boards and begging these people that drink out of Merlot glasses, that send their kids to private school, that drink or eat hors d'oeuvres, and will never come in contact with you except to tell you they want their frappuccino extra light with almond milk and a biscotti while you write their name on the side of a cup and you only make $13 a hour, and your kids don't have the Wi-Fi service to get their homework done. Are you ready for war? Are you ready for war? Because that's what this is and nothing less. So my advice to you is, never face them, face your people. Engage your people. Mount up your troops. So, if the rent goes up, what you gonna do? That's the question. It's not, "Please, please, please don't raise my rent. Please, please, please roll back my rent." You're begging your oppressor to show you mercy? You begging the people that call you "ratchas" when they're in their casa for mercy? The question is, what are you gonna do when that MCI is another $43 a month? What are you gonna do when your rent goes up another $80 a month? Are you gonna withhold your rent? Are you gonna let the militarized police state drag you out of your house by force? What are you prepared to do to fight for your city and fight for your homes and fight against your oppressor that has declared war on you? Any organization that teaches you any lesson that that you are not at war are playing games with you while their CEOs sit at the same parties that they are at. Okay? You ask the CEO of your organization where they party at, what their wine cooler looks like, where their kids go to school at, while they trick you not to be engaged in the war that you are in. Do we understand this, family? Do we understand this, family? Do not allow gentrifiers to come get on this mic and tell their sob stories about making $90,000 a year and can't pay $5,000 rent so they gotta go back home to their parents. I saw somebody take this mic and say that crap, and some of y'all clapped. You are clapping for your oppressor. Listen carefully to what's being said in this room. You are at war. I say it again, you are at war. The police have declared war on you. The 1% have declared war on you. People in their high posts have declared war on you. I sat here for three hours and watched these people not move a muscle when you tell the stories about your apartment. And why did I say they do that? Because they don't give a damn. Accept it so you can move to the next level that you need to move to. Stop begging. Black people are not perpetual victims. We are the originators of civilization. We are not perpetual victims. You don't come here begging. You come here telling. If our rent goes up, this is what we gonna do. If you don't roll that rent back, this is what we gonna do. If you let this landlord get away with neglecting us, this is what we gonna do. You come here to deliver the "or else." You don't come here to beg. Black people, we don't beg. Africans, we don't beg. If you're Afro-Portuguese, you don't beg. If you're African-Dominican, you don't beg. If you're African-Peruvian, you don't beg. You come here and you lay down the law, and you stand behind your law. We are at war, family. You better get with the program. These people don't give a shit.
Is Deborah Awah here? Deborah Awah? Esti Agolia?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Deborah Awah.
Ah, you're Deborah. Okay.
Yeah. I live at 382024 Bronx Boulevard. My landlord is... So I've been living there for about, I say, five years. And the reason I'm here is... They need... There's no need for them to be there. Give a free rent freezer. And 30% more of income rate issue. Bring it down, or they should stop it. Because I'm living in low income, and it's hard for me to make the payments every month. So if I refuse to pay it monthly, they used to give a overcharge, that's the late fee. And it makes the bill piling up. So right now, I'm evicted from my room. So we are here that they should consider because of the low income rate that we are having in our salary so that we can live peacefully in our apartment. And we are... I'm here right now saying thank you to Casa. They support me for all this issue. If not with their support, I would have not know where I would be. So we need support about this issue. Thank you and good night. We need a rent freezing.
Thank you. Esti Agolia? Is Esti here? No? All right. The next three speakers are Domingo Peano, Inalda Aguilar, and Alton Anderson. Domingo Peano? Inalda Aguilar? Alton Anderson? Okay.
Good evening, everyone up there.
Good evening. Good evening.
Okay. I would like to say, I had worked with the Housing Authority throughout my life, and other jobs. I've been an exterminator, a boiler man, things of that type. And I paid my rent. I've seen things get bad for different people. But I still would like to say, though, that... Okay, all right. All right, I got it, yeah. I mean, I've seen times when things don't go right. I was working for the Housing Authority. And a little something go wrong, they put you on a hearing and you may lose some of your pay. Things of that type, which I don't think is right. I've seen times that... When you go to court or anything for a hearing, and the people get out there and don't tell the truth about what might have happened, and you end up having to pay and suffer for it. I've seen times when you're supposed to have things fixed. Like in my case, I haven't had the electricity fixed yet. I mean, it don't make sense. You pay your money on time, but you don't get the results all the time. And it doesn't make sense for you have to argue about paying your rent and this and that all the time for minor little things. They want to give you trouble, they have people hanging in the hallways. And what they do, they want to give you a fine or something, or try to find a way to write you up. I see, I was out there the other day outside the building, and here are representatives trying to find a way to go against my daughter. She's outside, not even in the building. She's standing outside, she was smoking a cigarette. So what? What does that got to do with your building? People got freedom to do as they please, even if it's wrong. They got freedom to do as they please. Only thing you can do is if they wrong, you can try to correct it. But if they're right, you're also supposed to correct it. Okay, I just want to say that all of this here putting people out and so on, trying to accuse people for so many things, and ain't none of us perfect. It's all made-up stuff. Putting people out because they didn't pay their rent. What you gotta put them out for? To help them try to straighten it out. You can't just jump quick on every little thing that come up. What you gonna do if you have a heart attack? I can see you having a heart attack and don't do nothing about it. You gotta learn to care for each other. We don't own nothing. We don't own nothing. If I had a millionaire, it don't mean a damn thing to me. I can't take no damn money with me if I die and stuff. What I care about the money? All I care about the money is to give it away to help different people. I don't care if I ain't got no Cadillac car, bunk a damn car. Don't mean nothing to me. It's not important.
Mr. Anderson, your time is up.
Okay, but we all gotta learn to help each other and stop trying to down each other. And that's what we're doing too much of.
I thank you for your testimony. The next three speakers are Emma Alata, Angelina Rivera, and Cassandra Adams. Emma Alata?
Good evening, this has been a long day for me. I said to the young lady, I was invited by North clergy. And I said to the young lady, I'm gonna take a different flavor. Number one, I'm a baby boomer. So I've been through Jim Crow, I've been through the Black Panther, I've been through all of that stuff. So I'm not gonna come out radical. But I will say this much. Like yourself, I am an elected official for the Board of Education for District 10. I will say I support a lot of the stuff I heard in terms of the 204 rezoning and the Jerome Avenue rezoning and all that other stuff. My landlord won the Oscar, the Emmy, and the Tony for the worst landlord in the Bronx by the name of Park Ash. So I know how to kill his cat when he comes after my dog. But I want to say, as an elected official, I know what you're going through. I know what you have to face. But right is right. I work with the Board of Education. I see the effect of what happened with our children when they are living in transitional housing because they were put out, or because they can't eat, or because their parents can't pay the rent. We must have transparency. We must look into ourselves and make the right decision. In my block alone, within a six-block radius, we have four brand-new affordable housing. It's not affordable because we can't afford it. What we need to do is make these landlords accountable. We heard the statistics, now do your homework. If they want to increase, make sure they do what they have to do. A lot of these landlords are not making the repairs. I had to walk up and down five flights of stairs just to come here tonight to turn around and walk back up five more. I text my landlord, three days that elevator's been out. Look inside and do the right things. A lot of these landlords are crooks.
Thank you. Angelina Rivera?
Hi, my name is Angelina Rivera. I just want to say, you know, it's really hard for me. I'm a senior citizen, my husband's a citizen. We're not entitled to anything that the government gives out. According to them, we claim too much, we make too much money. Yeah, if you do everything by gross, of course. My landlord, he's so-so. He could do repairs in our buildings. He charges me for an air conditioner. He wants to charge a lady for a dryer. They just want to get money doing anything. They don't care. All they are interested is money. I need a rent freeze. I'm getting older. My money's not going up, my money's coming down. So please, think. Think of us, that we do not have the money to always be paying all these increases that these landlords want. I thank you, and I hope that you hear me.
Thank you. Cassandra Adams?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing what I have to say. Okay? Now, first of all, 450 Grand Concourse used to be my address before they made this the Ostos Community College, which I am for education. But I would allow myself, because I'm a Christian, so I'm not coming at you because God created us all. I see all of your faces and everybody in here. But I would like to appeal to you to look into your heart of hearts and realize that God is above Trump. He's above all. But at the same time, the Second Commandment, after loving God, we have to love thy neighbor. We are each other's keeper. We each other's neighbor, whether you my cab driver to drive me to my doctor's appointment, or whether you a teacher in the school teaching my autistic granddaughter. Now, where I'm from, like I said, in 1972, I lived at 450 Grand Concourse. We don't need no increases. We don't need no displacement. Because when you become homeless, the hotels or the housing who have to fund that, that's over three thousand dollars per person. This new building situation that they're building up, a building on every corner, liquor store, church, whatever have you, whatever the people do to maintain their self. You can have a million dollars and have no peace. We already seen it with the two people who committed suicide. But I want to appeal to you that it'd be suicide if you displaced the people who are working hard, working people of the city of New York who are out there in the struggle just fighting for basic human needs, which is respect. They want to keep their integrity, have character so they can teach their children that you don't have to be grown and living in my house. I took my children and raised them upstate. I'm from the Bronx. We came back down because my youngest got accepted to Pace University. She's a graduate. My other daughter, thank God, nobody had to reside under my roof. But I sat here and I heard testimony after testimony. Everything everyone said resonates with me. But my heart goes out to the people, and I hope de Blasio hears this. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, brother. But at the same time, nature, that's just one thing, but you have greed. There's only two factors, it's not even race. It's greed, and more people are being displaced because they don't have enough green, which is money. And the sad part about it, when we go home and we think about, and it's something that's gonna touch your heart, I already know it. But what I'm trying to state, and I'm making this point, but I want to make it real clear to you. Because I was in 1199 Union for many, many years. But in working with the disabled, United cerebral palsy of the state of New York. But at the same time of having this, I became disabled, having seizures after seizures after seizures. But I was at a point where I was making good money. My husband made good money. We're separated now, but that's all right. But at the same time, people are out here struggling just to eat, just to pay coffee, just to keep a roof over their head, and to live like they live in now while other buildings are going up. And it's junk, it's made of Legos. You build it up, everything is breaking down.
Excuse me, could you wind up your testimony?
Excuse me, ma'am. I don't see you every day. Are you the one who was a former judge?
Yes, I am.
Okay, but listen here. Judge not unless you want to be judged. Okay, I'm not trying to disrespect you. We are here, we are faces with a voice. And we're gonna have a voice tonight. What the sister said, was her radical? Yeah, that holds a place, but that's not my character. Okay? My character right here is, I don't disrespect you, don't do it to me. Because at the end of the day, when you go home, and I'm not judging you if you have money or if you don't. But people here in this community, because of the state that America is in, you have a job. You retired, right? I know you, I know all about you. I did my homework. But at the same time, we are all on the clock, but some of us is not getting paid to be on the clock. We come out here risking whether we're gonna get home safely. You know, in time, you ride on the bus, I don't know. I assume you don't. I'm safe to assume you don't ride the number four. I call it the IRT, the Iron Horse. That's the time I'm from. But at the same time, we don't need no rent increases because people's money is not going up, it's going down. And all I'm asking you, be that miracle in the middle. You on the tenant's side, or you on the landlord's side, or the mayor's side. But make yourself be a miracle in the middle so everybody can have a place to live. And thank you for hearing what I had to say. And y'all have a blessed evening.
Thank you.
Good night.
The next three speakers are Arguro Jimenez, Josefina Borbone, and Arjaleo Ortiz. Arguro Jimenez? Josefina Borbone? Arjaleo Ortiz?
Hi, good evening. My name is Arjaleo Ortiz, and I represent the organization of Nos Queramos We Stay. New York City has turned into the tale of two cities. It is the town of the have and the have-nots. There are many living in rent-stabilized apartments that still cannot afford the rent. If there is not a rent freeze, the homeless population will continue to grow. Now, many do not qualify for housing terms that's affordable because the incomes are taken from the all regions within New York State. Therefore, the local communities of people living in New York City do not get represented. And many of those local communities don't make those high incomes. So what Mayor de Blasio calls affordable is not affordable to many populations. Please take that under consideration. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. The next and last two speakers are Juana Huata and Fitzroy Christian. Juana Huata? All right. Fitzroy Christian?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm kind of glad I'm the last speaker. Because then this way you could turn your timer off and give me time to say what I have to say. Because I'm not speaking only for me, but for quite a few seniors who are also in my position. Until very recently, I worked in housing court, in the Bronx Housing Court. And I saw every day where landlords are bringing their tenants to court on all kinds of fearless charges. Simply because they wanted to find a way to harass them out of their homes so that they could get their vacancy exceptions and do superficial repairs to get IAIs and MCIs so that they could take those apartments off of the rent-stabilized rule. We see it every day, I saw it every day. I'm no longer working. I thought I was going to be going into retirement, but I looked at my funds and I realized I gotta go out and look for another job. And I'll show you why. I brought my sons up. They are all college graduates, but they're not doing too well. The rent is killing them, so I had to help them. So I did not have the kind of savings that I would like to have. Right now, I'm getting my social security, but because of deductions and other stuff, I'm not getting what I thought I was gonna get. And I'm paying 100% of my income in rent. In July, if you could read this, I will pay all of my social security plus going into my savings to make up the balance of my rent. The same for August. Same for September. And October. November, my savings are finished. I'll be owing my landlord money. In December, my balance is increased. And I'm sure by January, I'm gonna be in courts heading for shelter. Yes, I got squeezed, so my rent is frozen. But I still cannot afford the rent with the money I'm getting now. My oldest son, I'm thinking of having him come back home. So he has to suspend his future. His own family moving ahead on his own because he gotta come back home to have the old man live in his apartment. He is having a hard time. He cannot make it on his own. So our combined salary is what gonna make us survive together. Because he cannot make it on his own with a college degree. And I cannot make it on my own with two college degrees. And I cannot make it on my own with two college degrees and over fifty years of working. You are the final barrier between me and the shelter. There are a whole lot of seniors who are in my position. I have lost a whole lot of friends in the Bronx because they were forced out of their apartments with the high rents and had to go to live with their children elsewhere. There are a lot of families who bid goodbye to their children. But two, three, four years later, they're back home where they came from. Because they cannot afford it on their own or their parents are on the brink of being evicted and being homeless. And they had to come back to have their families. This is not the way human beings are supposed to live. All of us don't make six and seven figures a year. So we don't have that thick cushion on which we can survive in retirement, in our golden years. I'm in my seventies. I should not have to be looking for work. Yes, I was curious. I did not know six, seven months ago how things were going because I had income. I was able to help my kids and I felt as a dad, I was doing what I had to do. Things were going bad for them, so I could help them. I had a lot of friends who were doing the same thing. Now I'm no longer working. My income has changed. And I'm looking at homelessness. You can help to prevent that for me and for tens of thousands of other seniors and tens of thousands of other people who are young, who are working, but they cannot afford to stay in, in the Bronx because they're being pushed out. On top of that, there are three rezonings that are scheduled for the Bronx. We're talking about three phases of gentrification. Three phases of displacement where tens of thousands of people have to find places to live which are worse than where they are now. Because we are being pushed out to make room for wealthier people. To take the place where we have been living for forty, fifty, sixty years or more. We stayed here when the Bronx was burning. When they closed the firehouses, we stayed here. When they closed our schools and did not fix our parks, we stayed here. When the drug infestation ravaged the Bronx, we stayed here. Now through rent increases, MCIs, IAIs, um, rezonings, all kind of mechanics used by the city and by landlords and the whole predatory equity problems that they have are pushing us out of our homes. You cannot do all. But one thing you can do is to give us a rent freeze, give us a little relief, give us a time, a year or two, to be able to catch a breath and make some plans so that we can try to stay home. Raisin the rent this year means an increase in the sixty thousand people who are sleeping in shelters. It's an increase in the forty thousand people who are doubling and tripling up in homes meant for one family. You can stop it if you have the will. You can stop it if your heart is made of anything other than steel. You can stop it if you're a human being. Good night.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. It's very important to us to hear from all of you and we appreciate your patience in taking the time to come this evening. Uh, at this point, we've concluded the testimony. I'll ask, is there a motion to adjourn? A second? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.